Um agendas, I had a couple of things late. I always do that unfortunately, but. Let me know if you got it. Oh, looks. Mark, that's pretty nice. Does it, Mark, does it have a slimming effect?
Yes.
That's what I need to know. Jim Kane doesn't need to worry about it. Me and Bill need a slimming effect.
What's this all about here?
Oh, you're talking about Kane again?
Wait, I just gotta remind, I just wanna tell Lori Beth. Always feel free to turn up the heat. You know, because if it gets too cold for you.
She's fine. She looks quite comfortable.
Are you talking about the temperature?
The temperature, yes, yes.
Yeah, she'll turn the heat up.
He likes it at meat, he likes, he likes it at Meat Locker.
Oh, he does.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I was outside with a suit on and sweated through it. I live with one of those. Alright, so we're a couple of minutes away. We wanna give the press time. The front door is open, right Lori Beth? You came into the front. Mark, we're good, right? Mike, you know how to shut this off, correct?
Little red button on the bottom there.
Got it. Mark, thank you. It's wonderful, my. He's a member of the Blue Man Crew.
I know him, yeah. My brother.
No, you don't. You're not supposed to know the Blue Man Crew.
I do, yeah. My brother did a lot of work on his house and then I talked to him through the COH um drama club.
He's a rock star, but he also got sucked in because people on Duncan and around the village, Bill, you knew him too before the, before your time on the board, right? So he's done, he set this up, which is a smart TV and a smart board for us and one in the boardroom where we have our regular meetings. These are the work session meetings at this table. So oldest piece of furniture that we believe exists in the village, eighteen ninety-eight, this table. And it was just redone, so this is what we work off of. Yep, I want some, no, no worries. We got a couple of minutes.
Well, how do I start your thing?
Lila, here's your charge.
Okay.
All right now. Twenty minutes. Now twenty minutes includes question and answers from the board and you're gonna get a lot. They're on your side. So what you have to do is just answer their questions and I gotta give you twenty minutes, which is gonna start in thirty seconds. And then if I don't close this meeting at eight o'clock so that DPW superintendent can go watch the Jets game. He's gonna be in support and leave and then I look very feckless. So I need to make sure. Oh, exactly. You're not running for office. Alright, hi Carol, uh it's Lori Beth. You know Lori Beth? She lives up on Vine Brook. Carol lives on Duncan. Carol comes to a lot of the meetings and we're happy to have her. Yeah, so, so Lori Beth. Next trustee, she's gonna replace Rich Gaylord, but she's sworn in, so she's at the side table for Thanksgiving. Look at me, I got my pits and everything. It was, it was hot. Alright, everybody, we're here. Let's go ahead and get started. Stand, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, okay, um I'm gonna make a motion to open the work session. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um Chief, Mike, I know Dave was there, Phil was there, Jim was there, Lori Beth was there, you guys were there, you were there. Thank you, everybody, for being there as part of the nine eleven ceremony. It's uh, it's very integral to Cornwall since we lost Ken Kumpel, who was a member of a Bronx Firehouse and a member of Hudson Island Engine One and his two sons Greg and Carl went through the Cornwall Central School District and are one of ours and they're both members of the Fire Department in New York City. So um very special and important twenty-two year observance today. So thank you, everybody, for attending. It is important. And as I said in my remarks, it is Public Service and Public Safety's Memorial Day. So um thank you, everybody, for being there. Alright, so tonight, um why don't we do this before we do anything else, before we do the minutes and the monthly department reports? Lila, um so, so you know what you're dealing with. You know that the trustee's here. There's four of us right now to. Hi Manny, come on in. Manny, why don't you take that seat right there?
Good evening, Mr. Code Enforcement Officer.
Alright, this is Lori Beth Paley Oda. She's gonna be sworn in Friday and she'll be our fifth trustee. So tonight we're operating off of four. So before we do anything else, um Phyllis Murphy, who is at the Jet game tonight, probably parting her butt off in the parking lot as we speak, um who heads the Rec Department in the town of Cornwall, came in to see me this morning and just spoke on behalf of Vet Rep and what they're looking to do. Um I think everybody on this board right now, the four of us, are in concert that we wanna make sure that the Savage.
Wonder Festival.
I thought, I was wondering about the second word. I was wondering about it. Get that? The Savage Wonder Festival, which is, which was last year was in Sugarloaf. This year is gonna be in Sugarloaf.
No, no.
No.
We did not have one this year.
We didn't do it this year.
So the second one would be if approved.
So they're looking to do it next year at the Donahue Farm property. Um Bill is the village board's liaison to the Donahue Committee. I think Dave Work will be in here later. He's the chair of the Donahue Committee. You know all these names and all these people because we all live together. Um so here's where we stand as a board. We're in support of this. We just gotta figure out a way to get to yes. And the way to get to yes is gonna involve public safety. It's gonna involve, that's a big piece, and ingress and egress. How do we do it? I know back in the nineteen fifties, we did our fireworks down there for all of Cornwall, but we were a smaller village, a smaller town, a smaller greater Cornwall area. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, let you give your pitch, and then I know that these guys are gonna have some questions. Alright? So go ahead. Why don't you come up here so that, so that we can, we can see it. Yeah, well, just so you're on camera. Yep, okay.
So again, my name's Lila Faint. I'm the managing director for Vet Rep Theater. It's a nonprofit five oh one C three. And um as Jimmy said, we did the festival for the first time at Sugarloaf over Memorial Day weekend. And in twenty twenty-four, we're looking at trying to bring the festival home to Cornwall. And um we looked at some possible opportunities for that and Donahue Farm looked like a viable um option for us. We uh have had amazing support from the town and village and we wanna bring this back to, to our supporters and, and be able to have a great festival, celebrate the um veterans that are in the arts. So this isn't a talent show or something like that. These are veterans that are working to try to become professionals in their form of performing arts of whatever that is. And we, our mission is to try to provide that platform for them. Um they've spent a lot of time in service. They're a little behind their peers, so to speak, and so to give them that platform to kinda help raise awareness of their talents and what they're doing. So that's kind of an overview of what the festival is about. And what we want to propose is for Saturday, the twelfth of October in twenty twenty-four, to do the festival. Um it would include musical acts, comedians.
You're going, killing it.
Musical acts, comedians, poetry, um visual, all veterans, all veterans that, and when we talk about veterans, we have a very broad description. It's not just military service. It includes first responders, DOD, civilians, um foreign service, those kinds of things. So it's a bit broader and their immediate family members. Um we feel like that kind of service.
You're like USAA, the insurance company.
That's the way to look at it, yeah, exactly. Um and so to, to, to provide that, visual artists, um as well as the possibility. Our primary kind of thing that we focus on is theater, of course, and so we're looking at trying to do a small stage play out there as well. So that's kind of the concept of what we're looking. It's a one day festival. We would need to have some setup prior to that so that way we're checking things out, make sure that the infrastructure logistics are taken care of in that sense. Um and we're looking at uh attendance between three and five thousand, so very similar to what Riverfest has experienced in the past years. And we really want to um change the date and the signature block on the logistics plan of Riverfest. In, in essence, they have a great way of doing the offsite parking. We do not see parking other than some handicap parking similar to Riverfest onsite at Donahue Farm. The rest of it would be offsite in a similar pattern to what Riverfest does. Um so that's generally the.
Hours.
So yeah, the hours would be.
And what days? So what, what are the actual days?
Saturday, Saturday, the twelfth of October is the actual festival.
And that's everything?
That's everything. So it's a one-shot kind of a thing. We would um be getting in there at seven, which is the earliest that we're allowed to get in just to kinda set up and do those last minute morning kind of functions, but then open to the public around twelve, so noon. Um last act would go on about nine-ish, close, uh eight thirty, nine-ish, especially since uh daylight's gonna be less than it is in a typical summertime. So eight thirty, nine-ish, last act goes on, finish by nine thirty, get people out of there by ten. The next day we would.
Clean.
Kinda clean up and do everything.
So good call mentioning Riverfest. So Riverfest started in nineteen ninety-eight. They've been going on for twenty-five years, but they've only been active for twenty-three because COVID shut them down for two years. The only difference with Riverfest, and this is easier ingress and egress to the waterfront. And, and what we have to figure out, and this is not a, a roadblock, we have to figure this out, um is how to make this work and get people in and out. Riverfest is easy because bring people in, you bring, you bring them in on Shore Road, you send them up Dock Hill Road, and that's the way that the pattern goes at um, at the Donahue property. And what Phyllis was telling me, so a couple of weekends ago, they did a wedding there. And this was a test run. She said there were fifty, sixty people there. Dave, we do not have electricity there yet. I know we're close, right? Okay, so they brought in generators.
Yep.
Alright, before this happens next year, we have to have electric.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, and the other thing is, and we'll get into this a little later, the Donahue, the Donahue, the um Near Ford, Donahue Farm property piece, we're looking to put composting toilets down there like we have down at the waterfront. So you would have those now. You're bringing three thousand to five thousand people in, you're gonna need more than a his and hers. You're gonna need more than that.
Exactly, and we did, even with Sugarloaf with their indoor, we did porta potties as well out there. We've got um.
Alright, so I got a couple of questions. I'm gonna turn it over to these guys.
Absolutely.
So this is what Phyllis brought up, and I know Chief is back here and he's gonna be listening in because this is, this is the most important thing for me. Phyllis said something about you have private security.
We, we hired Blue Eagle Security for our.
Okay.
Um uh.
The first festival.
And it was just to kinda help us.
Did that out at.
At Sugarloaf. Absolutely.
Now, who is that? Chester? Who, who, who controls? Sugarloaf doesn't have a police department, do they?
Well, that's private.
Yeah.
Yeah, Blue Eagle is a private.
No, no, no. What I'm saying.
The town of Chester.
Chester, right. They have a police department. So it's in his jurisdiction. So.
So we went through Chester, let them know that we were doing that. At the same time that we were doing the festival, we combined with Sugarloaf with their big arts festival that they do. And so their manpower was focused mainly on that. And so we said we would hire Blue Eagle. And also because we have um ticketing and that kind of thing, we were gonna have booths and whatever, we felt more comfortable.
Who is Blue Eagle?
They're a private um firm that's run by veterans and they're local here in Orange County.
Are they strapped? Are they unarmed? What, what is, do they?
They carry.
They do? Okay, so they carry concealed and they all have pistol permits and they've all done all the qualifications and all the things that they would need to. Now, that's something that's gonna have to be run through the Orange County Sheriff's Office because um to make sure that they're, they're legal and able to carry it there. Now, for Sugarloaf, how many, how many people did you have there for security?
I don't remember. I think it was four or five. It wasn't a significant number of people, but just to help us with some.
Well, so Chief's got a look on his face, so I just wanna make sure. Security is the biggest thing for me. Traffic is gonna be number two.
Absolutely.
And then composting toilets and, and human waste is gonna be number three. So Chief, what are your thoughts?
So you, you folks are gonna do the same things as in Riverfest, I guess, plus people in.
Correct.
From certain.
Right, from like, our, our thought is middle school and other locations, having the bus pickup points, bring them in, and then the thought of it is coming down. Um Bayview coming into Donahue Farm, most of our stuff, as you come into, to the farm, would be very focused on the left side where the, where the barn is in that side. And so we really don't see any activities or people on that road that goes out to the trail. So that would be a bus, like they drop off right there, kinda as it wise out, drop off, get them off the road, drop off from the bus. The bus goes all the way down, turns around.
In the parking lot and then comes back.
Yeah.
The other option is, the other option is if they get jammed up doing that, you go straight down towards the power, towards where the gate is. And there's that turnaround area in there too.
You drop at the front and then continue.
Just continue straight down. You know, right before you get to the gate on two eighteen one?
Yeah, yeah.
There's that turnaround in there. And that's big enough for a bus to turn around in.
Yeah, we turn around down there.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Grab a big boy chair or you can grab that one right there.
Yeah. Plus, you know, two eighteen is not gonna be open. There's no way.
Right, so.
So before we get into traffic patterns and that, um which is a big thing, Chief, can we blend our own police department with private security? You comfortable with that? Can you make that work?
Sure, um obviously would be important to maybe meet with the management from the security company.
Absolutely.
Just so we can coordinate, maybe have a couple of meetings prior to the event. So this way we're on the same page.
Absolutely.
Because typically for something like this, like obviously Riverfest, Fireman's Fair, uh five K runs. We're, we're always involved in that to some capacity, so and I'm sure I would probably have to bring in a couple of extra.
Yeah, it's not a, a, a thing where we don't want you to be involved. We just, I guess, assume that that would be the way it would be because that's what Chester needed us to do for the festival. And so it was kinda, we just kinda figured.
Yeah, so, so, so here, I'd need him to coordinate with the Orange County Sheriff's Office because if you've got people that are caring, which they're allowed to do, and they're your security, I wanna make sure that the Orange County Sheriff's Office is okay with that. Chief, I'd also like to have some of their deputies on hand. I think we'd probably get them too, to have them to help with traffic, to help with.
Yeah.
Any issues.
Omnopresence.
Abs- absolutely. So presence is, is everything. Okay, so, so on that end, we'll, we'll get to that piece, then traffic. So the tough part is, especially with two eighteen closed, there's one way in and one way out. So how do we do that? Can we make that happen? And yes, Riverfest does it with buses and it works. And we, we have a bus stop here. We have a bus stop at the Bandstand. We have a bus stop um at Storm King Engine. We have a bus stop all along the way. How do we do that? Because the buses run along a loop for Riverfest. We don't have a loop. How do we make that work?
Well, if you come into Donahue Farm and you back around, then that becomes a loop, basically.
So the loop is Donahue Farm property.
I think you actually have three loops. You have one that goes into the property, one that goes down to the entrance to Storm, to the Storm King Road. And then the third one is just going down to the triangle. Prior to, so the bus is coming around.
Although that hairpin.
Stopping. It's a little bit of a hairpin. If you move the rock, the boulder back a little bit, you can make that turn. They can be dropped off. They'll be on, on the other side of the sidewalk. They have to walk up, what, you know, seventy-five yards and then they cross the street. So that bus can turn around.
Also, Bayview is a loop.
I say Captain Bayview.
Captain Bayview, that's another one, right? That's, that's.
And they probably wouldn't like it.
Crosswalk.
Right, yeah. Okay, because three can feel those complaints, because two eighteen's gonna be closed.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as, as long as you're not talking about people parked there. As long as it's shuttles.
Yeah, that's it. And then, and then it's gonna be using, we have limited parking, so you've got the municipal lot here. Now granted, we'll obviously talk to the town because this is gonna include everything, so we'll use the town as well. But in the village, we have this municipal lot, the municipal lot at the Bandstand. We have.
Firehouse, Mike?
I mean. Yeah, I mean, so, so we have some limited parking, but we're gonna have to encourage people to use it.
But in middle school, I think is, that's town and we'll have to talk to town. The middle school.
Hundred percent.
Middle towns.
But we'll, we'll.
Parking Town Hall, parking.
Alright, yeah, so, so public safety is workable. Am I hearing that from the four of you, from the four of us? And um traffic, commuting, um making this work, it's workable. Okay, third thing. So Dave tells me we will have electricity down there. I know we're working on that, Dave, this Dave. We're working on that to make that happen because for the wedding, there were only fifty or sixty people, not three to five thousand, and they use generators. We'll have to have power for that. You're gonna need power. Toilets, so eat.
I gotta jump back to traffic.
Okay.
Apropos emails today, the uh public access agreement for the trailhead, we can't tell people they can't drive up and park there.
No.
So as long as.
Absolutely.
So that might lend itself to the drop off at the front.
We don't want Ceni cutting on our ass again. Yeah, so yes, good with that. Um good with that. So then the toilet issue becomes this. Even if the Near Ford thing works, which we're hoping and we get a composting toilet down there, we will not have that by next October. So what is our plan for human waste?
At least thirty-one.
Yeah, fair. And you guys are gonna handle all that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so now, tell us what it's gonna entail. So you said there's comedians, there's performers, there's, you know, bands, the whole nine yards. How late will it go?
So my understanding is that ten is the latest, that anything can happen on the property there. So the last thing would be in eight thirty. Plus, we've got uh, to use the military terms, we've got E E N T around seven thirty, eight o'clock.
You checked it?
I did.
Of course you did.
That's what I do. So, you know, we know the sun's gonna be.
Early evening nautical twilight for you non-military folks.
Where we are pretty much now at this point. So.
Dusk.
We've got dusk and then so that around dusk going in, we'll be getting into our last um performer. We're thinking that that would be that, that like last set, hurrah, yay, that's the end, nine thirty done. That way it gives us thirty minutes to get people out and on their way and we're, we're being respectful of sound and, you know, all those.
Getting people out, I don't think to me the problem, as long as there's not music playing at twelve or one o'clock at night where you got people that are on Bayview. Perfect. Okay, a- and again, you've got the next day to break down. No one's gonna, no one's gonna require that. And you probably have the day before if we do this to do the setup. I don't see that as a problem. Absolutely. Where are you getting your stage from?
So we've been talking with Deek, but we've also talked to PRG and then we used the mobile stage man um who brought people in for the last uh, uh brought a stage in for the last uh festival. So there's some options there and we just need to see what makes the most sense. Um the general setup of what that would be if you're in the field and the um community garden is to your left and the barn is to your back. You kinda have like a semicircle of three stages. And what that does for us is that we don't have to have the whole twenty, thirty minutes where everybody's twiddling their thumbs going.
You're just rotating stages.
We're rotating stages and it allows, like a, a theater stage needs different things than uh, you know, music stage and that. And so the teardown, this, that, and whatever, we can just revolve around. So.
Lighting, where are you getting that from?
So the lighting is part, like that gets hung off of the stage. And again, that's through PRG, Deek, different people that we've talked to.
Well, Deek's a lighting guy. He lit Bannerman's Island, so.
So we, we talked with him. He, he did um with the Labor Day show and we talked to him about that. I was at the show. Um and it's similar type of setup, not quite as grand because we're not quite as rich as West Point Band, but um similar, similar idea.
Food and booths.
Uh food trucks.
You're gonna bring food trucks in. Those food trucks are gonna have to go through him. So they're gonna have to be inspected by him. So I would say if the board approves this and tonight is just a, hey, give it, put it on notice, they're gonna have to be inspected by him to make sure that they're safe and the Orange County Department of Health. Yeah, so those two have to both be done. So, and I love that idea. Okay, booths. What are, what are your thoughts on that?
So there'll be some vendor booths as well and that is mostly, we want it to be generally on, on brand, so artistic artisan type things that are.
Veteran stuff?
Yes, veteran, veteran information.
I'm sorry, are we saying booths or booths?
Boos. I said booze first.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. No, my concern is booze because you are, at Sugarloaf, did you sell beer, wine?
Yes, it was.
And liquor?
Uh not liquor. It was just cider and beer.
Cider and beer. Now who did that? Who sold it?
The um, so we did get a one day permit.
Yep, which you'd have to get here too.
Budweiser.
We had the Dana, yeah, Dana distributors came out and they had their little truck. We did that. We're not particularly interested in doing that again this year. We would rather the, like the food trucks that were, like have a vendor like um, what was the name of them? B L R, which is a veteran owned uh um operation that does cider, came out and did some things inside uh Sugarloaf and then um the dog one. I can't think of it now. But there was another veteran owned that was down by the stage and they.
But you're gonna need a liquor license for the day, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's something the board has to approve and we have to look at that. Okay, good. Alright, so liquor, food, checking on the trucks, bathrooms, you've answered that question. Traffic, we'll have to work through that traffic plan. Public safety, the chief said he's willing to work. Gentlemen, what am I missing?
Uh just one show, one performance at a time. So there's three stages, so there's no music playing here and somebody trying to act over here.
Oh, no, 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 no. That, that would be an absolute nightmare with that. Plus, it also spreads, you know, it, it creates a difference with the audience and that kind of thing. But yeah, absolutely. It's just kinda, you can just be on a swivel and in some cases you're right next to the stage and you're right there. Then other cases, you're looking over a little bit, but that's it.
People on blankets? Are you putting chairs down? What, or they bring in their collapsible uh camp stools or how does it work?
Bring your.
Whatever you wanna do.
Yes.
So you, okay, got it. So you're gonna need an area that's mowed, which we, which we're gonna use when we do the October fest and do our last movie there this fall. You're gonna need something similar. You're gonna need an area mode there. Um Mike, I mean, we normally do a hundred, two hundred people at a time, correct?
Last year, I think we were like seventy-five to a hundred.
Yeah.
So what's the peak crowd you anticipated at the even moment of the day? Like, how did it work at Sugarloaf? Was it a steady stream or was it like one hour long section where the full crowd was there?
I.
I was there most of the time. It was kind of a steady stream. I don't remember really.
It's pretty steady stream. Definitely there was um, and we did have kinda counter programming because we had indoor and outdoor, so you could have that. And so um we definitely had maybe a stream of people when the human cannonball was shot out, which we're not doing for this one, but.
Human cannonball.
Why not?
We got one. He wanted you to volunteer. You volunteered.
There it shined up.
So that obviously drew a lot of.
People that they had like there throughout the day in the mode area.
Sugarloaf was spread out.
It's a street fair's more setup, right?
No, no.
It was on the performing arts.
Oh, at the, okay.
But do you think we can support that in that back area where we keep it mowed? Without having to add into the, to the fields we have?
And Dave, Dave, Dave Work said they were probably gonna go back a little bit.
I was gonna say, yeah, you'd have to go back a little bit.
You could see like thirty yards back, basically. That's where the stages end up. So then that way what's there now and what's mowed now is pretty much what is available for.
Ah, that's an idea.
With respect to the food trucks and stuff, then when you come into Donahue Farm, you're gonna place them to the left, like kind of uh near the ice house, back behind the ice house.
Actually, actually where the, the dog kennel is, because that should be gone by then. And so that ends up being a nice kind of path.
How do you know that?
Dave took us all over.
Dave took you over there. Yes, we will be raising R A Z I N G, not R A I S I N G.
How many trucks did you, how many trucks do you enter?
Four, three trucks. We had. Six or seven last year.
Less than the Fourth of July, but a lot. Okay, yeah, alright, okay.
And just, you know, a variety of, of different things.
I just wanted to wet our whistle on this. Um village board, we have some things to think about and discuss. Um I don't wanna wait too long before we make a decision to go forward or not, because in fairness to them, they have to book a place and they need to do it a year out and we are a year out, so.
Thanks for the ax too.
Yeah, and the ax, yeah.
Rain, Dave?
Not.
Good question.
Rain or shine. It is what it is.
It is rain or shine. So it's Woodstock.
Yes.
Well, we're at Max Zazger's farm.
Last question is this. You need, what, at least a half a day to set up the day before?
Yeah, Deek has said that.
Yeah, I would.
Day, day before, full day to get.
Full day.
I would give them the day before, the day of, the day after. Same thing we do with, with Riverfest. We always allow them to set up the day before, operate on that day and then give them the next day to get things shut down, so.
I would think just in general, we want some kinda guarantee that any damage to the property would be repaired. If it's, and it's, it's all outdoors, right? There's no, nobody's gonna be messing with the barn or anything like that.
The only thing with the barn would be is that first little section where the stables are, that's open kind of right now.
Sort of the east end, toward the.
Yeah, court.
Toward Camp Olmstead.
Yes, um the visual artists, we thought that that would make a great place for them to be able to display their art. That way if it is in like in the stall area and that kind of thing, they can have kinda like their own booths, but it's in, so that way.
Did you look at the space?
We did. Dave let us in.
You went in there?
We went in, smelled it and everything.
You were okay? You didn't mind the swallows from Capistrano coming back? You were okay with all that?
We were good.
Okay.
There's a, there's a Manny question that's burning in there probably, but.
Uh tents?
Yes, so there will be some tents to provide um kinda like backstage area for the artists and that kind of a thing. We don't necessarily look at like trying to tent over any of the area where the uh, where the folks will be listening to it. That just gets to be difficult and guide wires and that's more of a danger issue. There'll be a um, a ten by ten tent that will go over the sound guy who will be kind of in the middle, running the stages and taking care of sound, lighting, you know, those kinds of things. Um and then um we would probably have some like an information tent, some things like that, so that people lost and found, I don't know where to go or.
Manny, your jurisdiction doesn't start until ten point one by ten point one and above, correct?
Yeah. I know that I was gonna ask. I mean, if they're gonna be under a hundred square feet, then that'll be fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think the largest would be like a twenty by twenty. That's what we had.
That's four hundred.
Speed bump to success right there.
What, what other huge red flag or something that would be a deal breaker or anything else? Because I think they'd given us stuff to think about, but anything else?
Yeah, I just wonder about using the interior of the barn. Maybe the shed would be better for the, it's covered and you can go in it and it's out of the elements, but because the floor in there, I don't know, but that's.
But we'll be in a different place next year too.
Right, exactly.
So, alright, but that's all to be determined. That's all to be determined. They, they wanna know if the village board is gonna be amenable to allowing this to happen, so um.
No open grills to answer your question. That would be contained within whatever the food truck has. We're not gonna get in the food business.
Uh this emerged at the uh, at the wedding. They, they ended up instituting an ad hoc smoking section.
Yeah, so here, so, so here's the thing, and Phyllis talked to me about that too, so um and Chief, how does this work again? Because on park property, we can tell people they cannot smoke vape or smoke weed, correct? On park property?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, but they can smoke in front of Village Hall if they want to. They can vape, they can do whatever they want. But on park property, which is the bandstand and obviously the park from the northern end, I'm sorry, the southern end where the gazebo is. No, I'm sorry, the northern end, all the way down to where the yacht club is, um essentially. Now, do we police that? We've been trying to do a little less policing, but my my thing which would help us out here is if we didn't have that, we didn't allow people to do that, because then we got a fire hazard.
We didn't allow it at our last.
And you didn't, and nobody complained about that? No cigars, no cigarettes, no blunts and no vaping too?
Did you see, I don't remember seeing any of them.
Okay, all right, then that makes.
And that was part of what Blue Eagle was there for is just to.
It's just to kind of police that piece.
Yep, it makes it a little easier so that it's not me trying to, right? Like, it just makes it a little easier. And then as we're carrying money and stuff, they would assort what's us.
So here's our commitment. Um the board now has kind of heard what your pitch is. Um we have stuff on our business agenda this month that we have to take care of. I'd like the next work session, which is going to be in October, to be a more fully fleshed out discussion amongst the board, the full board, and then make a determination if it's yes and a go, we'll approve it at the October meeting. Is that fair? That gives you one year. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You got twenty-nine minutes. You're done.
Manny, do you have a card?
I don't have one now, but I will write down my information for you.
Oh, thank you.
And I bet predicting Dave Work's gonna walk in here and go, all right, tell me the pitch, because he said he was gonna be here at seven thirty.
I know.
He actually took us all around the site, went through the barn with us.
Dave's a good, good guy. And there's nobody that knows the property better than he does, maybe Deek, but they're both close.
And then Deek came in and sat with us. We're over now.
Good.
So we're happy to, like, if you come up with like, you know, tonight, you're like, oh, I should have asked that question.
No. So so I I think we're rooting for you. We just gotta make sure that everything is, and you answered a lot of the questions. Security, traffic control, bathrooms, smoking, those are all issues that we had and questions. You answered them all. Perfect.
Do you guys buy EMS? EMTs?
Yeah, what, who did you use for that?
We actually didn't have. We didn't, the Chester had it on for the, for their little festival that they had out there. So we didn't have it on properties.
And that, that was my second question. The amount of people that came to your event. Can you say how many came specifically for your event versus the other event that was going on?
Yeah, we've got ticket um information. There were a lot of people where it got a little stuck in with a few things, where they ended up at the festival, where somebody had a van there and they thought that that was the festival. And so we lost some traffic in that sense with it. And so there was a little confusion.
Remember, you have a good number.
But we, yeah.
So what do you charge per head to come?
We have to figure that out because.
What did you charge last?
We only did five dollars the last time.
Five dollars a head?
Five dollars a head last time, but that was, we were four months old.
Got it.
And nobody knew who we were.
So are you paying the acts?
Yes. Well, we we bring them in to, like, we pay their hotel, flight.
Who pays for that?
We do.
So you do it out of vet rep?
We do it out of vet rep. We work on sponsors. We, you know, try to ticket sales, you know, all of those.
Did you have one general sponsor for the whole event?
No, but BLR was our, one of our top, like, he's he.
BLR?
Uh they're out of mill to town, believe, love, respect is, uh he, his primary thing is like athletic shirts and things like that. He's got some different contracts with uh teams and whatnot, but he uh sectioned out and started doing a cider as well. And that was his main thing is he did cider for us.
And we're looking, Dave, we're looking for um.
A general sponsor.
Yes.
Yeah. So the board to this point right now um has not come up with a plan on how we're going to lease the property. Um it's a very sticky wicket, if you will, because Scenic Hudson, who protects all the views and the vistas and and the property itself, um they have a say in that. When we did bring this up to them, because it's a veterans group, they weren't against it. They were amenable to it as long as it stayed within certain constraints. So here's my commitment to you with the board's blessing. Um we will discuss this at next month's work session in detail and we'll make a ruling on it. Um and either pass a resolution for or against at the October business meeting. So the way it works in October is what, Columbus Day? Um so we have to, I I don't know what the, it's normally the second Monday and the third Monday. The third Monday would be the um the board meeting. So that should give you one year. That's my commitment. Is that fair?
Very fair.
Anything else, any other alibis? Because we've already gone.
And Steve Work, yeah, with you too.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. You wet our whistle and that's what we needed. So thanks. Ladies, appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Second Monday is Columbus.
It's Columbus Day, so it's probably gonna go third and fourth, something like that. So thanks, Star. Thanks, Laura. All right, give my best to the hubs, by the way.
See you later. Take care.
Okay, um let's go ahead and move forward. So everybody, you've had a, by the way, Dave, Bill predicted that you would walk in at the last minute of this thing. He says he couldn't get here sooner, but apparently you gave him a good walkthrough and they did a great job. So the the board has stuff to chew on now to make the determination. So thanks for being here.
Yeah, it seems like parking, all right, that's gonna be them.
Parking, public safety, yeah. Parking, public safety, bathrooms, smoking policy. Um there were a number of different things, but they had the answers, I mean, as far as I could tell. So we'll we'll discuss this in October. Okay, um moving forward, minutes, has everybody taken a look at the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three business meeting minutes and the August second, twenty twenty-three um special meeting minutes? Any issues, concerns? If so, um they need to go to Doris. Um and we will approve these meeting minutes at the business meeting next week, which is Monday, the eighteenth. So please take a look at those. Monthly department reports. Let's start with the treasurer report. Any questions on what you have in front of you? Keep in mind, um this is the second month that um Gabby is our village treasurer. So she handles this separate and exclusive from um Doris. Doris handles the the village clerk business, but just take a look at that. Um I've sat down with Gabby. Um I'm satisfied with the numbers. And if nobody has any problems, you have time before next week to let me know if you do. All right, building depart, I'm sorry, yeah, building department. Manny, any issues or concerns regarding your report that the village board should know?
No.
Okay. Those board, any questions? Manny is in my hip pocket, because I think we spoke more today than we have in a couple of weeks, at least about a number of issues. And we'll talk about them on some of these other things. But anybody got any questions of the building department head? No?
Nope.
Okay, moving forward, uh fire company. Any questions on the August twenty twenty-three department report for Storm King Engine Two? Chief, anything to add?
No, other than you can see that four one five is out for repairs. Our our two older pieces of apparatus because we gotta keep them another four years and then it costs us a couple of bucks. Right now, we're looking for tires for engine four one two and hopefully it doesn't come to that we need to change the wheels on it.
Got it. We'll know that when.
We can't get the tires.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any questions for the chief?
Four one five is one of the pieces that's gonna be replaced by the copper tanker that we're guys.
Which will be here when our.
Forty-five months. It's probably forty-three now.
Yeah. Exactly. What 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 is the target date on that?
It started at forty-three. I think we're down to uh probably forty.
All right, three and a half years. All right, uh moving on, police department. Any questions for Chief Dixon? Chief, any issues on your report or anything you want the board to know or understand?
No.
All right, gentlemen?
Uh, actually, I'm sorry.
Fire.
Uh, yeah, fire. Uh twenty-six Duncan Avenue? Well, what uh was there a house just slated for demolition for rebuilding or something like that?
Yep.
Oh.
Where is twenty-six?
Especially where there was.
The former Dick Odell's former house, you wouldn't know where that is. So.
Yes, I would. You're up on the map, correct?
It's up the driveway before the apartment.
I knew that. I knew that. Oh, I knew that. All right.
Anyway.
All right. Any other questions on fire? Any other alibis?
Go ahead, go left. Let the guys go in and get their hands on the building and see what they need to do.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, moving forward, going back to police department. Any questions, issues, concerns with the police?
Chief, have we started the those posts? Um they enforced it along River, River.
Yes, we have. Um if you see in the vehicle trap portion, um was quite ordered and that normally is been.
Twenty-one, yeah.
The sign is on.
That was all dedicated um to River Ave.
Uh, overwork, okay. And what, how many, how, how many days or hours?
What counts as a post?
Well, we would have, we have three separate tours per day. So we did it for about a week straight, so. You know, we did it all tours.
So regarding the.
Dedicated a half hour. Um each officer dedicated a half hour to their patrol specifically.
For that.
For traffic enforcement.
Very good. So regard. Thirteen violations in it? The summonses and warnings?
Yeah, I don't know specifically. I don't know specifically how many were issued on River.
So regarding River Avenue and the complaints that we've gotten from residents on River Avenue, they all came to a village board meeting en masse um to complain um or to express their dissatisfaction with um with speeds along, yeah, speeds along River Avenue, um a whole lot of things. Um so what have we done? Um we moved the stop sign, um which is on River Avenue just past Pepatini's. It was further off of the intersection of Idlewild, River and Hudson. We moved it up a little bit because the two parking spaces in front of the um the uh the covered patio for um for Pepatini's kind of blocked the sign. We moved it up. We straightened it. Dave put some reflective tape or reflective pieces on it so that you can see it with your lights. What else did we do? We took away two parking spaces. We took away the parking space on Hudson Street by the bandstand, because when you're coming up River Avenue and you're nosing out, you can't see. And with that car that's parked on the outside of the crosswalk, um it just made it too difficult. We took away that parking space, which business owners had to deal with. They don't wanna lose parking spaces. We did it for public safety purposes. We also took away the parking space that was in front of the old firehouse. So there was one space there. The police had blocked that off for a long period of time because during school, letting, you know, the kids in and letting them out, that parking space, we kind of took it away because if you park there, you people coming out of Maple Avenue by the post office can't see onto Hudson Street. We got too many kids there. Just didn't make sense. We took away that parking space. We also relettered in front of crosswalks throughout the village, specifically on River, but also on Duncan. And I've noticed it's in a lot of other different places too. Four foot S T O P, the four stop signs. The only two things left to do that we promised that we would look at require a public hearing. It's on slate for that. One is to lower the speed limit on River from what to what, Dave?
Twenty-five to twenty.
No, I thought it was thirty to twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five to.
To get permission from the state to do it.
To do that. I thought, I'm sorry.
To get permission from the state to go below twenty-five in a.
Oh, I got you. Right. So that's, so that's one. The second one is where Churchill runs into River and I walked it with Dave and we took a look at it.
I think it's Spruce. I said Churchill.
It is. It's Spruce. I'm sorry. It is Spruce. No, that's me. Where Spruce um intersects into River, we're going to make that a one-way street. Now, the people on Spruce and Churchill that are used to and comfortable driving there, it probably won't make them happy, but it will be safer as opposed to having people turn into Spruce and come off of Spruce. So those are the two things we have left to do. We've done everything else which we thought was reasonable. Am I missing anything? Dave, chief?
That's all, that's all we discussed. The one thing that we didn't really get to is that S curve where the houses are right up against the road. That's the toughest part. That's the part where they're feeling like.
Yeah, it is. Because coming up and down River, if you're driving like an a-hole, I mean, it's just what are you gonna do? And where do you put a cop car to stop that? I mean, up at the top, you can kind of.
We see anyway. We'll see.
So.
We'll also post the speed uh radar sign on River Avenue.
Yes, yes.
Good.
That sign's good.
Okay. All right. Any other alibis for the police department? All right, moving forward, public works. Dave, anything to add, anything important to note for the board?
Uh obviously, if you look at the reports, mostly uh storm damage uh stuff. And under the notes there, uh myself and Wayne are gonna be out of uh in October for schooling. And also, we've been been uh in negotiations with CSX to get the riverfront repaved, the area between the two cross, the two railroad crossings, the two parking lots, including up to the bridge that crosses the stream. I don't have the document in hand yet, but I have come to an agreement with CSX. They're going to pay us for repaving that.
So I spoke to Ed Bagaliterra. I spoke. Barbara Galetto, yeah, it's a good Italian name. Um I spoke to him today. Um we are gonna get the money to have that repaved. Um thank you to Dave for working with him on that. Um this gentleman came off of vacation from Lake George, drove all the way down from Lake George to the village, walked it with us, looked at it. We made the case. We are going to get Shore Road from the bottom of Dock Hill Road all the way to the railroad tracks by the shelter, the gazebo, whatever you wanna call it, and the municipal parking spaces in between. All of that repaved. Dave gave him a number. They've agreed to that. Dave, he said that there would be a W two en route to you this week and then a check would follow.
Yeah, they want our W nine and the Ayla re- release agreement.
Yeah. So that's awesome. Um while we do that, is Tilcon gonna do the work?
Yes.
Okay, are we going to take, so as you come down Dock Hill Road, everybody's familiar with coming down Dock Hill Road, the parking area just to the left, so you're going north, just to the left.
The answer is yes.
Okay, so what Dave is saying is that parking lot was destroyed when the storm happened and CSX brought in gravel, materials, men, equipment, the whole nine yards, and destroyed it. But it's also at a pitch like this. So when Mrs. McGillicuddy comes down, there's senior citizen, two or three kids, blah, blah, blah. And she parks there with her, with her permitted parking sticker. She's parking on an angle like this. Dave would like to bring that down, which is gonna require us to do some type of wall on the other side where there's a guard rail to lower that down so people aren't parking on a pitch.
Under four feet.
Under four feet. So that's the plan. That's the plan there. All right? So then further down, as you go down toward the gazebo or the shelter, whatever we're calling it, there's parking area there. That's gonna be all repaved too. So we're getting brand new asphalt there. They're gonna cut us a check. Dave's done the work to get the contractor here. That's the way it works. CSX says, give us a number. We gave them the number. Dave did the work up. They're gonna take care of it. That is a huge home run. Okay.
I signed with Tilcon, so we're gonna be on the schedule. It's probably gonna be late October, first week in November, but it'll be done.
Perfect. It's gonna be done. And that's, so, yeah, it it, they've done a great job. So while that's going on, um we also made a commitment to the Hudson Island Nature Museum, the one on the boulevard, not the one on Muser, which is out on Angola, to pave their parking lot. Dave is gonna piggyback this to do that. And then the village, because we own the property, it was deeded over to us by the Stillman family, but we own the property. And because the Hudson Island Nature Museum, which operates on grants and operates on donations, um but is a non-for-profit, has done a great job of completely renovating the building, we've agreed not just to redo the parking lot, but also to have our guys do a nice paver walkway from the parking lot, which, Dave, what is it, twenty feet, fifteen feet, not even, but to do a nice paver um walkway up to the steps there. So that will be done this year. We've promised them and made that commitment. So two good things coming. Um that's that. What else, Dave, on the public work side? Obviously, you you're, we've got meetings with FEMA next week. Um the storm of December twenty-third and the storm of July ninth have destroyed Mountain Road. We have over three million dollars worth of damage. Um we're in the works right now to get that repaired. We're still working. I spoke to uh Assemblyman Ikas tonight at the nine eleven ceremony um to see about getting some assistance. I know Congressman Ryan's office is working on this. Senator Scoofus's office is working on this. But getting people paid, individual assistance, none of that has been declared on Cornwall, Fort Montgomery, or Highland Falls. And so it's a tough thing, because I gotta deal with people on a daily basis saying, I need help. Great, you're gonna get mountain road repaired, but what about my house? And it's not just the people at the bottom, which took a beating. And I believe the Wilcom's, Shannon and Rosemary came in and spoke to the board when I was gone last month. But it's people going up the mountain as well and up on top of the mountain as well. There's a number of families up there that the water has to have someplace to go. And the problem is finding where you can put it, because if you fix one person's problem, that water has to go somewhere. that water has to go somewhere, and, and everything that, when the United States Department of Agriculture came here and Mike and Dave and I walked with them, everything that they determine about things that we do as a municipality, you have to take into effect downstream. And unfortunately, when you live on a mountain like we do, or at the bottom of a mountain like we are now, everything's downstream, so we're working on that. Dave, what else on the public work side?
Uh, I don't have the copy of the agenda entirely, but, uh, that's it on the report, I think.
Yep, uh, we'll go through some more stuff on other business, all right, um, trustees, any questions for Dave on the public work stuff? All right, water department, Michael, anything quick? Obviously, you've got some agenda items on other business, but anything, um, the trustees should know?
Uh, real quick, we got the speeding permit from the D C was emailed out to us about four o'clock this afternoon. It's effective October first, and then the, uh, the water meter project, I'm going.
Good, we'll talk about that a little bit more down there, all right, um, yeah, Mike's got four things on the other business end. Um, New Windsor EMS, um, I continue to do, you know, jumping jacks and, uh, and cartwheels over what an amazing job New Windsor EMS and Cornwall EMS have done, um, since this village board and the town council made the tough decision to go with New Windsor EMS, um, and to break away from Kovak, um, since July first of two thousand and twenty-two, there have been zero missed calls. And that's the gold standard, and that's what we expect, and the times of response, they average between seven and six minutes, have been going down by seconds and tenths of seconds, but that's what we expect, we expect them to be there when the call happens, you're never gonna get that, but they're moving closer and closer to that, and the gold standard is no missed calls since July first, two thousand and twenty-two. And I think that's something this board and our community should be exceedingly proud of. Okay, resolutions, um, this is a tough one, we have to accept the resignation of trustee Rich Gaylord, Rich is out of town, he is, um, in, I believe he's in Greece with his lovely wife, um, they have bought some property down south, um, in process of selling their business and selling their home, um, Rich is a lifelong Cornwall and Hudson resident. Um, his wife's been a judge and an attorney for a long period of time, their kids have grown up, gone through the school system here, graduated from here. They're planning on remaining in the area with, uh, either an apartment or a townhouse or a condominium, but they are putting their property, their, their home on the market, and as such, not living in the village, you cannot serve in this board. So tonight, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept the resignation, um, with regrets, of trustee Rich Gaylord, who was elected in two thousand and twenty, um, served a full term to two thousand and twenty-two, was re-elected, and will now be departing before his term is over, which would be in March of two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Did he submit his resignation?
He did.
In writing.
He did.
Was I seeing it?
Um, I don't know if you have, but it was, it was in true Rich style, it was handwritten on a piece of paper and he gave it to Doris. So yes, I don't know if it's in your packet, but-
What was the effective date, uh, fif- fifteenth?
Um, I think it's the eleventh, it's on the, it, it was for the eleventh, it was for tonight, so that we can accept it for tonight. We will be, because we're a five-member board until we accept this. As of tonight, we're a four-member board until September fifteenth, when Lori Beth is sworn in. So tonight, I'm just asking that we accept his resignation, and I will make sure that you guys get a copy of the resignation letter tomorrow, but it was scheduled for the eleventh so that it was work and we could accept it for tonight, which leaves us at, at four until Friday, so. Any further discussion?
All, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Dave, the first time I remember to do it and your ass getting open up. All right, come on, he's watching that clock, because-
We did.
We did.
And we opened up a minute early, so go ahead.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, my deputy mayor.
Stop, just call the vote.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we accept it, all four of us, so, all right, we are now a four-member board. Second resolution in front of us, um, and I spoke to, um, uh, Judge McKay today in regards to this. So, the Donahue Committee, um, and we're blessed to have the chair of the Donahue Committee, Mr. Work, here with us, will be holding an Oktoberfest celebration on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at the Donahue Farm property. And whereas part of the celebration, beer and wine will be served. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that pursuant to Village Code Section forty-five dash three point A, the village board authorizes consumption of alcohol on the village's Donahue Farm property for the Oktoberfest celebration. Um, Joe reminded me that the village needs to ensure that it has the appropriate license from the New York State Liquor Authority and must ensure from an, from an outside insurance carrier that no special policy, I'm sorry, from our insurance ca- carrier, that no special policy or coverage is required for this event. With that withstanding, I'm going to make a motion that the board allow the Donahue Committee to sell beer and wine as their fundraiser for the, sir?
Who's the date?
He said October thirty.
October thirtieth?
September thirtieth.
Dave?
Right?
See, if nothing else happens, you're here, you're valued being here.
Who's your water?
All right. Mike, you were giving me the stink eye too? All right, no, okay, all right, it's September thirtieth, apologies, I'll make that amendment, okay? Um, so for them to do that as part of a fundraiser for the Donahue Farm property, remember, the village does not give the Donahue Committee money to do what they need to down there, we do it on donations, um, and we do it on volunteer work, skin in the game, so. I'm gonna make the motion for the village board to allow the sales of beer and wine at the September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, special, um-
Our Oktoberfest.
Oktoberfest event at the Donahue Farm property, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, done, all right, resolutions are done, moving on to other business, vet rep presentation, done. Gentlemen, and soon to be gentle lady, um, so on Friday, at close of business, Jean Mahoney, our beloved village clerk of some twenty-nine years, will no longer be on the books, um, she is still on the books, she's been on what we called in the federal government, terminal leave, I don't know what we call it here at this level, but it's where you take your vacation and you're still getting paid, she'll be off the books. Um, it is what held me up from appointing a full-time village clerk, because we have an acting village clerk right now, and we are paying her commensurate with the responsibilities, and we have an acting deputy village clerk, we're paying her commensurate with her responsibilities. Um, I wanted a little bit of time before we made any official announcement, I will say this. Um, Megan Gishwin, who is working as our acting deputy village clerk, has done an outstanding job. And Doris Wickizer, who's our acting village clerk, has done an outstanding job over the course of almost two months now, month and a half to two months. So what I'd like to do is to put it on Monday night, Monday night's agenda for us to appoint Doris Wickizer as the village clerk at the same rate of pay, um, that she is currently getting paid, and Megan Gishwin is the deputy village clerk at the same rate of pay. Any discussion?
And those are, those go through March thirty-first, and then at the, at the, uh, April meeting, that's when we reappoint.
And I'm sure they will, um, they will get a slight bump in their salaries, I'm sure both of them are gonna come in and talk to me as everyone in this village does when it gets close to budget time, to talk about their value and what the appropriate pay should be. And I will have those conversations with them and with Gabby, who is our village treasurer, and will make a determination. But right now, this appointment would be at their current pay rate that the village board approved for them to be in the acting capacity. All right, any further discussion?
Uh, there was initially some discussion of provisional appointments in both cases, right? And not just the acting, but was there, uh-
I use those terms, I use those terms interchangeably.
Understood.
Yeah, that's my fault, but I did.
No, 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 I don't, I'm not-
I think provisional is probably the appropriate term, but in the FBI, it was acting, where you're doing the job, you could even get the pay, you just could not be called the official.
Uh, essentially, we, uh, I know that we had initially, because we couldn't actually appoint them full-time,
Right.
uh, because of the, uh, presence of the, of the, uh, existing village clerk, so they were appointed as acting and deputy, an acting deputy.
Yes.
There was a sort of probationary discussion as well, I believe, and are we looking to prolong that? Is it possible, did we learn the lesson that we can't do probationary appointment of village clerk? Um-
I don't think we can.
Because they're already village employees, they're already village employees, and all I asked of both of them, because I had worked with them for two years as the mayor, when they were in the deputy, um, the deputy village clerk and Megan was down as the secretary to the planning board and zoning board of fields, I just said I wanted to see them in these positions. They have exceeded my expectations, and I wanted to be able to speak to the board and say, yes, I mean, you guys can still talk to them, you guys can still, um, you know, come back and talk to me privately about it, but I have been beyond satisfied with their performances. And so I thought I would say that tonight, give you the opportunity to consider it, I would like to appoint them at the business meeting on the eighteenth to the official position.
You should, you should.
Yeah, they've done a great job, and trust me, I'm, I'm not the easiest guy to work for.
No, you're not.
Look, nobody says, no, no, that's not true, Jim.
I said, no, you're not.
All right, so, um, that's that, just keep in mind, if you have a aversion to that or you're not comfortable with that, please come see me privately, that is my intention, but I will do that with board support, I need three members to vote yes, but I believe the two of them deserve the jobs. Okay, moving forward, Donahue Memorial Park land appraisal update. Okay, so tomorrow at three o'clock, are you available? I have to have you. I just, I have to have you.
I will do my best.
Yoda and the second star was said, there's no try, there's do or do not, are you doing or do noting?
I will, I will, I will in touch.
So tomorrow, um, I will be meeting with council on the village side, Judge McKay, Dave Decker, who's kind of taking on the yacht club stuff, um, and we will be meeting down there at the piece of property that is adjacent, you can see it on there, but I don't want to pull it out, everybody knows where it is, that's adjacent to the yacht club. You come down Dock Hill Road, you bang a right going south towards West Point, you see where the pavilion is there, you see the parking lot in front of you, there's a piece of property that the village owns. I have the paperwork, on August fourth of two thousand and ten, um, under Mayor Gross, the village board entered into an agreement for a one-hundred-year lease broken up into four twenty-five-year segments.
It was under Gross.
It was.
The renewal was up under Gross.
So then it would have been done under, it was done under Mayor Moulton, so the renewal was done there, got it, okay, got it.
So it's a renewal.
Okay, but when you say renewal, the renewal was for a hundred years?
No, it's twenty-five-year terms, they, that, at their, they exercise it, we can't prevent them, as long as they exercise it, they get to renew for an additional, additional twenty-five years.
Okay, so why is, when we talked to Mr. Kondraki at the meeting, he said, no, it's a hundred years, and the way I read this lease is-
Because when you add up, because there were four twenty-five-year terms, that's what he's looking at.
The agreement ends at a hundred years.
Yes, correct.
But they can actually-
So what's a hundred years from now?
No, it's just too long.
It's from twenty-ten, twenty-one-ten.
So it's twenty-one-ten, right, okay, I know, exactly.
Twenty-one-ten.
Okay, so, so here's the thing, so Dave Howson and I, and our engineer, and Joe McKay, and attorney Decker, went down and walked the property on Shore Road that's been in dispute now for two years. We own the road from the center line, eight feet out on either edge, we understand the CSX overlay, the twenty-five feet on either side. We also understand and have to acknowledge that the Cornwall Yacht Club owns the property on the Hudson Riverside of our road, they own it. Now, when I spoke to the judge and when I spoke to Dave Decker, my intention with board support is to allow them to go ahead and execute whatever lease they have with CSX and to park along that road. They can remove the garbage bags or whatever coverings they have on the no parking. However, they will acknowledge in writing that that is our road, we've owned it for over a hundred years, we've paved it, we've hatched it, we've snowbloat it, we've done all the things, we've put guardrails in, we've done everything, it's our road. What I'm asking for is the one sign that they have at the front, as you're coming into Shore Road, you bang the right onto, on Dock Hill, onto Shore Road, that says no trespassing, has to be moved onto their property, if they accede to that, I am willing to let this go. I don't think we need to spend one more nickel of monies to fight this, so long as they're okay with that. I want that agreement tomorrow, three o'clock, when Jim Kane and I will be down there. And then number two, the next thing is that piece of property where the church, the old Cornwall Landing Church is. Um, Dave and I met with the appraiser, the same appraiser that did the Maple Avenue property, the, the municipal building there. Um, he's coming down from Kingston, little quirky, enjoyed him, he ran the, the, the wheeler, the, the wheel roller out there. On the map, it says a hundred and fifty feet, but if you go from the edge, so Yacht Club has the building here, here's the Hudson River, then they have a building that's perpendicular to it, if you go from the edge of that building to our parking lot, it's only a hundred and twenty-eight feet, but that is village property. I believe it's the Yacht Club, unless it was just a group of wonderful volunteers, but they painted the outside of the Cornwall Landing Church. They took down the, they took down the, um, plaque that Mayor Gross and Deputy Mayor Gazda had put up, the village board had put up years ago, people were reaching out to me apoplectic about that because they thought that we had taken it down. I said, no, I went down and looked at it, the building has been painted, cleaned up, and the plaque was put back there. They've also put new item four down, everything's cleaned up over there. It's our property, we have this lease with them, I want the board, once we get the appraisal, I want to look at what the fair market value is, and I can promise you, it's not gonna be two hundred and fifty dollars a year, I want the contract changed. Now, I'm a guy that believes in the obligation of contracts, but I also believe that this village board should take a look at it, things change, we're in a different place right now, and I would be willing to ask this village board that if we construct a different deal with the Yacht Club, whatever monies come in at fair market value, we reinvest it in the park, so it'll be a win-win. So that's my plan, that's my goal, I don't want it to be a secret, that's why I'm doing it in open session right now. So tomorrow at three o'clock, we'll go down there, take a look at it, um, and that's where we'll discuss with their attorney where we go from here.
Is that strip fenced currently?
Yeah, yeah, there's a cyclone fence there built, but if you come in on the Yacht Club property side, there's no fence.
Right.
So all you have to do is walk around the Cornwall Landing Church, because the cyclone fence goes out from the church, and then it goes down, and there's a beautiful beach, beachhead down there, and again, that property is being leased by them for two hundred and fifty dollars a year, so I just wanna look at that and renegotiate, let's see what fair market lease value is, and then let's go to them and say, guys, let's be fair, let's figure out what it should be, if you agree to pay that, I'll, I'll agree to reinvest those monies, now I have to go to the treasurer, I have to go to council, make sure I can do that, but I'd be willing to say the board would be interested in reinvesting that in the Donahue Memorial Park, okay? All right, so that's that, moving forward, New York Ford Grant Brief, um, I'm gonna do this real quick, I have another meeting tomorrow because every Wednesday I have a fourteen meeting, um, last Wednesday, Jim Kane was there, um, we had a about a two-hour and fifteen-minute meeting, um, in regards to the New York Ford project.
Dave Work was there.
Dave was there too, I know, he keeps coming, he keeps, I keep, I suck him into the boat, he thinks he's actually, but yeah, they promised the next time, the next meeting, the LPC meeting number four, local planning committee meeting number four, we're actually gonna get into the projects. We have ten projects between the village and the town, and they're excellent, we have a number of municipal projects. The hood ornament is a connector trail that starts down at the Donahue Farm property, includes the Donahue Memorial Park property, comes up and then enjoins into the Hudson, Hudson Street, and then enjoins into Main Street and goes all the way to Shadane Circle. So that's what this map is, it includes NEMA, it includes down at the waterfront, and it goes all the way to, and Vet Rep has already left, but we were able to include Vet Rep into that as well, um, wonderful projects, we have projects in the village that were private sector, um, at the Storm King Theater that was put in, um, in the town, they had one at the Boutique Hotel that they're looking to do at the Bernica property. Vet Rep had a project for the Shadane Building, which is if you go around the traffic circle just behind the old, uh, the Chico's, there's a big white building there, that's gonna be the new Vet Rep location, and then the Lemon Building, which is also owned by Christopher Paul Meyer, who's the head of Vet Rep, um, is gonna be turned into something called, if this- Um, is going to be turned into something called, if this, if they get the funding here, um, the Imaginarium, which is going to be like a bar. And a cool place for the arts for, you know, um, you know, different theater acts and, uh, comedians and things like that. So we have a lot of really good stuff going on. I don't know the first movie that was played at Storm King Theater, Dave might. But in nineteen fifty-four. In nineteen fifty-four, a young Paul Gould saw Twenty Thousand Leagues Under the Sea by Jules Verne. And Mike Trainor and I were talking the other day, and we said, if they get this black box theater that they're looking to put in there. In between Storm King Lounge and Pepetini's and behind the Storm King Market, which would be really cool. We should play the first movie that was ever played at the Storm King Theater there, just for, just for.
You can't bring your horse though, Dave.
Alright, so, 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 long story short, long story short, four point five million dollars. Um, I'm happy to talk to any of you guys offline about the different projects. Trust me, I feel like I know them inside and out by now. Because we've gone through an ad nauseam, um, but we've put in about eight million dollars worth of projects. That's municipalities, meaning the town, Josh's crew and our crew. Private sector, and I just mentioned a couple of things in the village and a couple of things in the town, and not-for-profit. So those three entities are vying for four point five million dollars. One of the things we're looking for is a thing called. Um, the Small Project Fund, which Josh and I are both asking for, which is three hundred thousand dollars. That would be set aside. Um, out of the four point five million, we would have a proctor for that. It can't be a village employer, a town employee. We'd have to probably hire somebody. And then when it comes to facades along Main Street, whether it's in the town or in the village. People could come and ask for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, you know, if, if somebody down here wanted to redo their front and they put in a. Request for twenty-five thousand dollars, it would come out of that small project fund. Gives us a little bit more discretionary use of the monies. Everything else has to go through New York State, and I'm telling you right now, you'd have a better chance of, I mean, this is the most grueling. And scrutinized thing I've ever seen. I mean, the layers of it, and I get it. It's our money, they're giving back to us. But they also want to make sure that it's going to the right things and the rules are strict. So, any questions? Come see me about it. We're still working on that, moving that along. Okay, next thing. Um, where's Rick? Where are you, brother?
Behind you.
Right behind me? Alright, so, um, originally, Rich Gaylord was not on the board. When the board, under the tutelage of Mayor Coin, um, I was a brand new trustee at the time. Made a determination to set up a board of fire commissioners, actually in New York State. Um, it's not a requirement, it's highly encouraged. Um, some places, meaning villages, towns and cities have them, other places don't. We made a determination, and again, I was the junior backbencher at the time, but as a board, we made the determination, we were going to go to the fire commission. When Mayor Coin was here, he thought the mayor should be on it, and then there should be two people. Somebody with firematic experience that had no connections to Storm King Engine Number Two, and somebody maybe that had fire experience. But was, you know, could have been in the company or something like that. But the board, after Mayor Coin left, we changed that. I didn't think the mayor should be on it. I acquiesced and said there should be a member of the village board on it. So Rich Gaylord stepped up and said, I'll do it. He was the board's liaison. The board then, a year later, looked at it and said, you know what? We really don't need to have a member of the village board on it. We need smart people that are independent of the village board. The village board is still the convening authority that handles everything that they need and says yes or no. So why have a member of the village board on it? So Rich is leaving. So we are now going to post that position, and we're not going to ask, I'm not going to ask one of you members. Of the village board to be on that. We're going to post it. There's some language, I think it's two or three pages. I looked at it the other day. Rich, what did it say? Like. Uh, Rick, it was like accounting experience, um, this experience, that experience, it was a whole host of things, but.
Dave Work was going to volunteer since he's got so much time.
Dave, you got time in your hands, right? Yeah, Dave Work and Dave Conrad, Dave that ends in Y, they have a very meeting to attend.
He said he puts out enough fires.
Alright, so anyway, guys, just going forward, Rich is off right now. Um, Rick is the acting fire commissioner. He works with Jeff Armitage, couldn't think of two more experienced, qualified people. Obviously, his experience in the FDNY and being retired from there, Jeff has been here and at the, um, the West Point Fire Department. And retired out of that, but the two of them being there have been a big help. So we're going to get that posted, but I wanted to put the board on notice that that's coming.
I have a great candidate, but they don't know it yet.
Okay, good, let's talk. Alright, we don't have to figure it out tonight, but we are going to post that very shortly. Yeah, that would be a good idea.
They don't know yet.
Alright, next thing. Um, Doris, and again, another reason why I think she's done a fabulous job of stepping into a very difficult position. Meaning replacing Jean, um, one of the few people I think you could actually say around here is irreplaceable, but Doris has done a great job. Doris has advocated that we need to streamline village property use request forms. So every week, people ask to use this room. Right? This is why we'll not have anybody working in here. I don't want the records management clerk, I don't want the treasurer. This room is the work session room and we allow people to use it. Last week, the library committee was in here. It was a bunch of septuagenarians and octogenarians. That were in here, it was like nine of them, and they were going through book club, and it was fascinating. I'm next door, got the door closed. And I can hear them talking about this book, and this is what this room should be about. It's a municipal building and it should be available since the library's under construction right now. So, we don't lease this, but we give this out. We give the boardroom out. We've used it for a couple of Cornwall Central High School. And Cornwall Central School District. They have a couple of committees where they're trying to rope in parents and community members to be involved in what's going on at the school. They rotate their meetings, they asked to do it here and they did it here. Absolutely, they should be here. Riverfest, the Riverfest Committee meets here. Um, so this is one place, the back room is another place. The bandstand is a place. The parking lot out here for St. Jude's Tricathon for, um, sometimes when Riverfest needs a place. You know, if we do the Savage Wonder Festival, whatever, to do that out here. The bandstand, the gazebo. The soon-to-be-built pavilion and the Donahue Farm property. All Doris wants to do is stream like this. We have. A number of different forms for everything, and she wants it to say, you need insurance, you need this, you need this, where do you want it? How many people? And have it where you can just check the box which place you're looking to get. I told her, go for it. As long as the village board is good with it. We're good?
Can't see why.
I told you that, but, okay, moving on. Um. Dave, so the agreement with Mary Donahue, um, this was something brought up by council. Um, obviously, we had an anonymous donation. Um, you know, the village board had, and this is under Mayor Coin's, uh, tenure. The village board had a pot of money to replace the roof and do some stabilization repairs on the barn. Um, after we bought the property, the village board had figured out that we needed, Jim, what was it, like six sixty, six hundred and sixty thousand? And then we had like two hundred thousand dollars built in. Six twenty and one eight. So we, we had that beautiful new roof put on there and it was, you know, done in the perfect period, the same color, the whole nine yards. Well, we had, um, an anonymous donor through Mary Donahue, four anonymous donors through Mary Donahue. Um, who agreed to make a donation, Dave, fifty-six thousand? Fifty-six thousand to do the same thing to the Ice House Building. Um, you know, that's the Ice House and then, uh. What's the other part of that building? What do we call it?
And then the, uh, shed.
Yeah, and the shed. Um, because remember, the kennels are going to be raised. We're going to do that as soon as we get clearance from our engineers. And we get the asbestos removed on the sleeve to the chimney on the kennels, our guys are going to knock that kennel down. Remove all that debris and stuff there and just clear that area out. So anyway, um, the concern, and it's not a concern. But since the village board struggled and put a lot of work into this donation policy. Making sure that if we get a check from somebody, even though it didn't come entirely from her, um, it was, it, I was advised. That we need to make sure that there wouldn't be an offer of a position or an offer, and I said, if you think in a million years that she wants. Anything to do with this insanity, but, um, it is something that Joe McKay is, had, has advised us to. Make sure that we're, we're good with. No good deed goes unpunished.
The penalty is that she's in charge now.
Yeah, I know, exactly. Exactly. Alright, so just want to give that heads up. Okay, uh.
So with no action, we're just.
So no action.
That we are not to do a quid pro quo for the, for the anonymous donation.
Yes, yes. And these are, I understand it, it's valid, I said, are you kidding me? But I get it. Um, so anyway, just needed to bring that to the board's attention. Um, the Donahue Farm Road. So, don't want to get into it too long because we're already way over where we should be. Um, this is something, Bill, where do we stand with Ceni Hudson? In talking to Dave, we have to do something with that road. Are we going to be able to oil and chip it or do something on that?
They say definitively no. So I have sent you and Dave just a, a reasoned description of our reasons for asking. Imagery that Dave provided showing how closely the tar and chip would look like the gravel road. Wrote a note saying, this is why we're asking for it. Um, and so I just said that to both of you, just as a draft to look at, and I'll send it back to them. I wrote to them today and they said, we already told you no.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's, that's where.
So what's their commitment to plowing it? I cannot send our snow plows down there because it's going to destroy them, and that's my only concern. I do know that there have been times, they have plowed that. Intermittently, they've done it, which is a wonderful help, but my concern is sending our guys down there. And we're talking about the road off of Bayview that runs all the way to the parking lot before the Howell Trailhead, so.
Loop that the buses are going to.
Going to use, but, um.
And I sent them potholes, you know, it's pothole now. Yeah, she uses the front end of it, yeah. Uh, so, you know, I've made the argument, I've written an argument. You guys just look at it, say, if you think that suits. And I'll send it back to them and say, this is why we're asking for it.
To me?
I said, just right before the.
Got it, okay. I'll take a look at that and we'll, and we'll talk about.
Yeah, and it's just, you know, it's pretty straightforward. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, going forward, Michael, the next one, two, three, four things are you. Alright, give them to us quick here. Manual read fee, go ahead and brief the board.
Alright, so we're, we're going through the, the water meter process. We've got about thirty percent of them done. Uh, we anticipate, um, getting to a point, probably within the next three months. That we're going to be down to the last twenty-five percent or so. And typically speaking, those are the, the remaining holdouts, people who don't want their, their meter changed for whatever reason. Which is fine, but as an incentive to get it done, because the whole purpose of doing this is so that we don't have to come out and read the meters. Is to institute a manual read fee. If they don't get their meter changed out, then every time we come out to read. We're going to tack on an additional seventy-five dollars to, to the village thing, that's a fair amount. Um, and again, that's for an incentive. I think I, I, I think I might have sent an email out a while ago about it. Um, but I'd like the village board to approve that and add that to the fee schedule.
Good. Any disagreement from the village board? Michael, brief me on this. It makes perfect sense and I'm a hundred percent in agreement with it. Any issues? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Michael, meter testing.
Uh, water meters, as we're going through this process, obviously, you guys all know that, you know, our department is, is funded through our own revenue generating. Um, and big part has to water meters, we're changing out the residential water meters. Any meter that's larger than one inch is to be tested at a schedule to be determined by the village board. Um, according to the code, there is no schedule in the code. So I'd like to have the board authorized that we follow the AWWA standards, which is the industry standards that we all follow for.
What does that stand for?
American Water Works Association.
Got it.
Um, eight inch, it's an eight inch meter and larger, supposed to be tested annually.
Good.
Um, one and a half inch to two inch, supposed to be tested every five years. The village is not, not responsible for the, the, the. The costs involved, the, the property owner is. Everything, the property owner pays for all this.
How many do we have?
I'd have to go through them.
Not that many though, right?
Probably forty, forty to fifty of them.
Inch and a half and larger.
Non-standard.
And, and, and understand that, you know, you take an eight inch meter, if it fails its test, they have to, to pay to have it repaired or replaced. An eight inch meter is twenty-four thousand dollars. So, so that's just, that's the next step in our.
Is, is this standard call for, uh, an age on that test to be done? So in other words, if you bought a brand new meter last year. How does it fall in the?
So, so if it's an eight inch meter, if you bought it brand new next year, it's got to get tested annually. The other way that you can go about it is if you don't have the turbine type meter, you install a Mach, an ultrasound meter, it's a Mach ten. Those are guaranteed for ten years. And the problem that the, uh, property owners are going to have is. There isn't many testing organizations out there.
Okay.
Standard sizes don't, aren't on the schedule, or it's only for non-standard?
Well, the three quarter and five eights, they're, they're due every fifteen years, uh, which is in your residential house. But those generally speaking will get changed out before then.
Yeah. So for those who are getting tested, that gets added to the water bill, what's the cost of a test? If they have to pay for the.
Oh, we don't do that. They have to hire a contractor.
Oh, I see. The individual homeowner is responsible for hiring to get tested for any.
It's not now, understand.
Just changes your meter out. They don't, and then they throw that meter away.
And, and, and that's probably what will happen here, because you're not going to find anybody who tests them. Um, I've reached out to, to the manufacturer and he said, there's nobody in New York State that, that, that tests water meters. An inch and a half isn't a, uh, residential sized meter. It's a commercial meter.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for Mike on this?
I'm still a little confused, but I will get in touch with the superintendent.
It, it's standard in, in the industry.
I just don't understand how it's going to get tested if there's no testers, and we all have to do it, but there's nobody who does it.
As, as Dave said, Central Hudson, they just replace it, and that's what will happen. Yeah, and, and what will happen is the property owner, according to village code, is responsible for the cost of the meter.
Right, okay.
Alright, alright, next item, um, is the Main Street Bridge replacement as it relates to adjacent water main. Obviously, you know that Main Street is in the town. I think everybody's familiar with the geography. Um, and the project to expand the bridge, to redo it, to reroute traffic. Um, which I know the town council had been working on and, and Mike, obviously because, um, he handles water for the greater Cornwall area. Um, was responsible for coming up with a plan on how we were going to get water to Main Street businesses while this was going on. They were supposed to perform it during this construction season, which was quickly approaching the end of. And then one additional construction season, which would have been next spring and summer, and this has been delayed, cost overages. Um, issues that had nothing to do with us, but Mike, you want to give a quick update on the water main replacement there? When this project goes through, and it will, but when it does.
Yeah, so the engineers and I have taken the, uh, the mindset that when projects like this are going on. We're going to try and take advantage of the, um, cost savings that may be available to us by having these projects done at the same time. With another project. Um, so we have a water main that's under the Canterbury Creek there. It's, uh, from eighteen ninety-five. Um, in today's world, you don't want water mains under the creek, you want to raise them up above the creek. So with Orange County changing at that water meter, we're going to move the water main, I'm sorry, change at the bridge, we're going to move. We're going to move.
Is it the ten inch, Mike, like that one there? So it's that eighteen ninety-five cross section right there, that's a cast iron eighteen ninety-five pipe that he's talking about.
Yeah, so we'll put that onto the bridge. So all I'm looking for the village board to do is at the next meeting authorize the, the village to go out to contract. Um, go out to bid so that we can have it in the same bid cycle as the, and, uh, Main Street Bridge, which will be this fall.
What length are we talking about, Mike?
Um, you're probably talking a hundred feet by the time it's all said and done. And understand that's the only, only water main that feeds Main Street. So if something happens to that during construction or any other time, that business area is without water.
Is it under the creek, under the bridge now?
Yeah, it's under the, under the creek adjacent to the bridge. It's not actually under the bridge, it's under the wing walls.
We had some bad leaks off of that, right, Mike?
We have.
We had a major leak off of that one time. Alright, any other questions or issues for Mike on that, on that issue? Michael, thank you. I'm going to do one alibi in here before we get to the request permission advertised for a water department vacancy. Um, so next Monday, a week from tonight, will be the village board meeting. Gentlemen, I, and gentle lady, because you'll be there as well. I do not know if there'll be a six o'clock attorney client, but I would anticipate it. So, meeting starts at seven o'clock. Anticipate, six P M, us in here for attorney client and Dave, Mike, anybody else that might have matters that need to go before Joe. That would be the time. And Dave, Mike, anybody else that might have matters that need to go before Joe, that would be the time to do it. The next Thursday, so it's a week from this Thursday, is the joint village board, town council. Um, water committee um, special meeting. It's gonna be hosted here. It'll be back in the boardroom. Um, and in that meeting, our engineers, remember, the village board, uh, I believe I'd just gotten on the board at the time. We authorized eighty-eight thousand dollars for our engineers to do a complete look at our water system. To look at the nineteen twenty-seven pipes, the eighteen ninety-five pipes, and Mike, what is that, nineteen fifty? Nineteen fifties pipe, and you can look at the shape that they're in, the five dams we have on the reservoirs up top. And basically to give us a, hey, guys and gal, this is the most important thing to focus on now. This you can put off ten years, this you can put off twenty years, but this right now is a sucking chest wound. So, that meeting will be at seven o'clock. Expect that it's gonna go about two hours to probably three hours and years wide. Um, the first half hour, forty minutes will be our engineers giving the presentation. The next twenty to thirty minutes will be Mike Trainer, who is the chair of the water committee. That was made up of one member of the village board, the deputy mayor, one member of the town council, uh, Tim McCarty. One member of the village with some experience, an in-state user, that was Eric Danega, who's also the DPW supervisor for Orange County. And one in-state user in the town, which is Carla Castillo, who's Castillo, who's also the um.
CAC.
CCAC, the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council Chairperson. So there'll be a little bit of that. There's gonna be opportunities for us, meaning the two boards, um, to discuss, ask questions and that stuff. There will be no public comment at the beginning. This will be an open session meeting. It will be live streamed from the back room. There will be public comment, and I talked about this with Mike, and this is what I'm gonna go with unless you guys disagree, but I don't think you will. There will be public comment at the end. There's no need that anybody needs to speak at the beginning. They can speak at the end. I'm going to have a packet of this. Um, Mike, what do we call in this thing? What is the actual term for this? This?
It is the draft water system master plan.
Draft water system master plan. I'm gonna make it available to council members and trustees and council. We're not gonna put it online. Um, we will discuss it in an open session. Um, but it is nothing more than a draft. I don't wanna, you hand something out like this, and then somebody comes back and says, well, you said on page three that this was such and such, um, and then the village gets sued. This is a working document, so there will be a copy available for each member of the board and the council, and that's it. And council, meaning council, C O U N C I L and C O U N S E L. Okay, that is a week from Thursday. Please carve that out. I need the entire board there. This is big. Okay, next item for water is the request permission advertised for water department vacancy. And before we do that, my understanding this morning at the department head meetings, and I'll speak for Mike and Dave. Is that Mr. Connor Watts, who started out on the back of a garbage truck and working for the DPW. And then moved over to the water department, is now moving back to the DPW. Because of the more favorable hours to be on the back of a garbage truck. Connor's a good kid, known him a long time. And Sweet Lou Dela Cruz, um, from the DPW is going to be moving over to the water department. Gentlemen, do I have that right? It's a one-for-one swap. We have to make sure the position levels and the pay and everything equals out by contract. But that's what we're doing, correct? Okay. That leaves us down one, my son left three weeks ago, two weeks ago, whatever it was. So Mike is asking the village board for permission to advertise for a water department vacancy. Mike, what can you say on that?
So that was before we found out about the, the, the player swap. Um, so all I'd like to say is on that, I do have a candidate for the vacancy that Anthony had created. Um, he comes to us with a few years of uh, experience within the water industry. Um, he has a CDL driver's license as well as a uh, a class D water treatment license already. Um, so I'd be looking for the board at next week's meeting to authorize hiring him. Um, and in terms of for the vacancy, I think Dave and I still have to figure out how that's gonna actually go down with the union and whatnot. But that does create a vacancy for Dave at that point.
Um, Mike and I interviewed this gentleman. I'm, I'm not gonna say where he's coming from at this juncture. I'm happy to talk to board members offline about it. Um, generally speaking, my policy, unless the board disagrees, when it comes to hiring a police officer. The board should be involved in the hiring process. When it comes to replacing members of the DPW and the water department. Unless a board member wants to interview somebody personally, generally speaking, Mike or Dave brings them to me, I interview them. And if I come to you and tell you, this is what I think, generally speaking, the board's comfortable with that, and that's where I think we are on this potential water department hire. Is that fair? Alright, alright, that's that. Um, gentlemen, we already spoke about shore road repaving. We talked about the Hudson Island Nature Museum repaving, the July ninth storm update. I've got FEMA coming in, we're still dealing with the United States Department of Agriculture, we're still dealing with the congressman's office, we're still dealing. State Senator's Office, the Assemblyman's Office, all those things. When I get good news, you will be the second people to hear from it after I hear about it. Alright, so that's that. Lastly, the pavilion project, we already talked about it. Dave Carnright, who's really been the guy behind this and done a lot of the heavy lifting, literally and figuratively, um, came to me and said, hey, look. Um, because we had to bid this out three hundred times before we finally went to a local guy. Who we all know and love and said, you have to do this, and he said, I'll do it all right, but he needed stamped plans. And that was a reasonable request. Dave is working on that, and Dave told me tonight at the nine eleven.
I just forwarded him to Mike.
Got it.
For printing.
So we have the stamped plans. So, so we own, we own the materials, we own the trusses, we own everything, and then once we have the stamped plans. Um, we have a budget for this. Dave, I believe, what is it, twenty-nine thousand or something? I think it's twenty, twenty-nine nine, if I remember off the top of my head, I know. But anyway, trust me, they're not gonna make any money on this project. We had a limited budget on it, and we said, you gotta do it for this, and because they're local. Um, you know, Jack, uh, Jack Burns and Tommy Whale, and they said, they'll do it. So it'll be put up. Um, we'll see how it looks, and we'll go from there. I know Dave Halverson is looking at um, ordering us some picnic tables for it in the next year. Um, I've had a couple of gentlemen, elderly gentlemen, shouldn't say that. Um, a couple of gentlemen come to me and talk to me about potential kayak racks and ways to do it, and where we could possibly do this. So, we're looking at some options on that. That's all I've got. So, without further ado, I'll go around for board comments, and I'll start with trustee Brian.
I'm gonna go really fast. Uh, we talked about the management agreement for Donahue Farm. Uh, there was a question about clarification around whether we can do weddings. Whether those are perceived as, you know, included in the conservation easement, as well as there was some slightly confusing language about whether you're allowed to park. Wedding guests at the parking area, et cetera. I've asked for clarification on that, and told them what we believe. Good reading is. Vet rep, good presentation. Uh, they had the, Donahue Committee had its meeting. They proposed to double the size of the community garden. They're planning a harvest dinner. Uh, they've installed a solar pump and two water troughs, and they're gonna be uh, figuring out the finances within the community fund there. Uh, infrastructure, the electricity, is that, there's a job number for it with Central Hudson?
We're, we were waiting on the underwriters permit. I don't know where it stands.
It's uh, actually stuck on the side of the box.
Ah.
So.
So is that good?
So are we waiting for Central Hudson now?
You give them a call, give them what for?
Of course I'll call.
No, you will.
Uh, they're meeting tomorrow night in the boardroom at six thirty.
Alright.
Uh, I was down.
To Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Does Doris know that?
Uh, their dad's working on it with Doris.
Who is?
The secretary, Dan Pointex.
Got it, good enough.
Uh, I was at the site today to take pictures of the pothole road, and I saw, I observed one-time carpentry up on the roof doing some work. Taking down old shingles and putting up membrane.
Roof of the Ice House.
The shed, Ice House.
Are we calling it the Ice House or the Shed?
Well, they were on the shed. The Ice House is the.
Got it, on the other side, got it.
Um. Uh, the Donahue Committee, also the uh, pavilion is gonna be built very soon, uh, which we just talked about. Uh, electric vehicle chargers, I moved that forward a little bit. Uh, I sent, I filled out the form for NIFA. Um, to look into it, I looked at the EV make-ready program with Central Hudson. As you know, I showed Central Hudson around, they chose, they, they talked about the specs for um, three locations. Uh, I started the process to get a quote from New York Power Authority. I do have a non-binding estimate from Real Term Energy for the end-to-end.
And Bill, we're talking about three locations, one here.
Village Hall.
One at the bandstand, at the municipal lot in the bandstand, and one down at.
Memorial Park.
Donnie Memorial Park.
Now, I don't think this could move fast enough to piggyback with the repaving so that they could trench to do the two spots on the north end.
Yeah.
But there, there were two possible locations there, one at the north end by the gazebo and the other one down on the south end.
You know, Bill, I got a question for you on that. So, on the soup to nuts contract, right on, on that contract, do they do the?
They subcontract out to a.
The electric they do?
Yeah, the installation, yeah.
Okay, so they do the drop from the pole?
Uh, they would do, yeah, the, the pole to the kiosk. Central Hudson will do the, they'll make sure that the power is there in the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and with no cost. And the, the end-to-end thing from Real Term, their quote includes dealing with Central Hudson to make sure that we're. That the project qualifies for the EV make-ready, which is like ninety percent coverage, so that would be.
What else?
Uh. Fire commission, I, I, I texted somebody who has not responded, and I don't think I have the right number.
Just uh, just let me know. If you got somebody, and we'll talk to Rick and Jeff about it. Alright. Um, trustee Carnright.
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor Kane? Wow, I think I've said everything I need to say too, so I think I'm good. Alibis from the superintendents.
Zach Wilson playing quarterback for the New York Jets.
Wait a minute, what are you talking about?
Dave can just feel it.
Well, David, zero, zero as far as um.
Look up the stats.
Wow.
Anyway.
Wow.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Anything, Dave?
Dave?
Yeah, Dave.
What a good soldier.
Yeah.
Dave always comes in, doesn't get any glory, and then leaves without speaking.
Thanks, everybody, for the nine eleven memorial today.
Well, well done. I'd like to make a motion to close, conclude the meeting. Second, good, all in favor? Done.
Alright.
Sorry, I promised you that. So Lloyd Beth, the way this normally works, these are the longer ones. We try to make the business meetings short and sweet. These are the longer ones.
We actually have been doing good.
We've been doing good, but I was out of town. Are we good? Good.